This council meeting is called to order in accordance with the open public meetings law. This meeting of April 4th, 2022 was included in the list of meetings published in the Curry News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting was also placed on the bulletin board at Borough Hall. In addition, a copy of this notice is available to the public. A copy of the statement shall be included in the minutes of this meeting. Mayor Dan Sullivan.
Here.
Council members, Graham Brady.
He's here.
Tom Mitchell.
Here.
Gina Stravick.
Here.
Roger Brum.
Here.
Fred Weed.
Here.
And Randy Pitts is excused this evening.
Please stand and join me in the class. The House of Representatives is unified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united land, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. First, I want to apologize to the public. We're about six minutes late. We had a fairly expensive executive session. We try to stick to a firm timeline. Sometimes things take a little bit longer to discuss, so we're at long, and we thank you for joining us tonight. One set of minutes for March 21. For motion.
Second. Council members Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Brum.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Do we have no department reports tonight, Kevin, or what?
Uh, no, we just get them in there.
Okay, and the committee reports will start to line up with Mr. Mitchell.
Okay. The new parking deck at the Somerville train station is expected to open for commuters in the next couple of weeks. The rates are expected to be $5 per day or $165 per quarter. So that should make it a little easier for commuters. And the only other thing I have, a little bit of show and tell here, to pass around this token. On the one side, it says free parking, Somerville Chamber of Commerce. And on the other side, it says token of appreciation. I don't know what year it's from. It was found in my lawn.
You operating a parking lot over there, Tom?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that what you use when you put your windshield up? Wow.
Yep. It looks like it's the size of a penny, so I think it was back when all our meters for the penny meters that it fit, you know?
Piece of history.
That's a piece of history there.
That's it?
And that's all I have.
All right, Tom, thank you.
Okay.
The flood advisory committee met on Monday. We had a very positive meeting. Um, we have some direction on where we're headed and some conversations to have with some of the landowners. And we'll report back as soon as we have a finalized situation. Uh, you'll also see on the agenda tonight to remove our engine, what used to be Engine 1. Uh, that was lost in the flood during rescuing folks from Hurricane Ida. Uh, and that is going to be up for bid, uh, the non-working fire engine. So we're excited to see it go, but we're excited to see what comes next.
That's it. Dr. Brady.
Yes, sir. I, um, tonight we have a resolution to approve road repairs on Lisa Terrace, Lori Drive, Mariner Street, and Lee Way. As a resident on Lee Way, I'm happy to see that we'll be able to drive our own smooth pavement in the very near future. The planning board approved the multifamily building to be built on South Bridge Street where the old Lips Lounge was located, and two buildings next to, next door to it. I believe it got to be 68 units.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight units, uh, along with a small retail space on the first floor. Parking will be entirely in the building with three levels of underground parking. And they'll have a rooftop for residents to have outdoor dining. This comes on the heels of another approved project to build the Oak, two first-class restaurants where McLevy's property was located at the corner of Main and South Bridge Street. So there's going to be a lot of activity there. And finally, this week, we will see a new deck adjacent to the railroad open up with 500 units and public parking spaces. There's so much needed in town. And I've heard rumors that Avalon Day will be opening a rental office soon for all the folks to find Somerville to be the place to live. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. That's all.
Stravick. Uh, the environmental commission met last month. Uh, they spent the first part of their meeting touring the sewage plant. It was the first time, I think, to the, for a public tour. Uh, quite an interesting experience. And, uh, they also learned, uh, about how we better educate the public on, uh, safe sewage and disposals. Um, so more to come on that from their end. Um, they are preparing for the community gardens. Uh, everything is in gear, ready to go. Waiting for the, uh, the physical structure to be put up, um, and, uh, looking for a grand opening of June 1st. April 23rd is the, uh, annual, uh, town cleanup day in celebration of Earth Day, Earth Week. Um, they have something new planned this year, two new things, uh, in addition to their, uh, regular cleanup, uh, coordinated with, uh, Department of Public Works. We'll have a mini green fair, um, with, uh, some, some different booths on, um, different types of recycling and good environmental practices. Um, and then also, uh, we will be inviting, uh, families and volunteers to come out to plant trees, uh, seedlings along the brook, uh, instead of if they don't want to clean up. So, or in addition to. Uh, so that's, uh, nine o'clock at the Somerville High School parking lot. Um, and, uh, that's where we start, and, uh, they'll complete the projects on their, on families and volunteers on their own time. So, uh, we welcome, uh, many people to come and help with that. And the last thing I have is, uh, the environmental commission members are also, uh, looking for tree vacancies. It's been a, a goal to fill our, um, open spots along the streets with residents who want trees. So if anybody, uh, has a tree vacancy in, in their, um, front yard, uh, or front curb, uh, they should contact, um, Chip Kaiser or go through the website. And, uh, we're working on, uh, additional trees to replant along, uh, the streets of town.
What's the website, Gina?
The, the town website.
I love it.
Yeah. The environmental commission has a page and we'll read it to that. Or they can reach me.
How's me?
Yes, uh, real quick. Registration for youth tennis and soccer clinics are still open. There is a second session for soccer at 10:00 AM, and they expanded the ages from four to eight years old. Work is still ongoing in the parks at Carol Page or playground, uh, and it is closed until further notice, uh, for the tile work. And there are bids that will be accepted on April 19th for pool management operations at Walk Park. Obviously, these are a lot of pools that were damaged during the flood, and we want to make sure they are safe, uh, and, you know, ready to be used. So if, uh, some of those parks are closed, the pools, uh, coming in the spring and summer, uh, don't be surprised. That's why. Finally, this past Saturday, I attended, uh, one of the, uh, they've been doing it for a little while, but now they're starting to promote it, uh, through the recreation committee, a running club, uh, at 10:00 AM on Saturdays. And, uh, they will be meeting at 6:00 PM on Wednesdays, and that is over by the tennis course behind, um, by Firehouse Field, right off of Veterans Memorial Drive. Uh, it's fun. It was about, uh, a little over 30 miles we ran and, uh, got to meet some people. And, uh, if you're into running, this is, uh, is a good little, uh, little old group to get to know your neighbors. And that is all I have, Your Honor.
Okay. Couple of items from my desk. Um, I remember with great sadness, the bicycle tragedy in, uh, in Jordan Bridgewater over the weekend, 11-year-old girl was struck and killed. So Kevin, could you reach out to the department, not this department, and rec, we put together a fact sheet on bicycle safety. I mean, you know, everyone knows wear a helmet, but there's more to it than that. Weather's getting nice now. You know, it's lighter, longer. There's more street activity. People will be out riding, walking, biking, and driving. So we could, we could just push out, you know, information.
Mayor, if we could extend that to address the problem that the YMCA was about?
Yes. Yeah, I, I had talked to the chief. I don't know what, where that stands right now. We had an inquiry from the YMCA at the intersection of Green and, um, Bridge. Which is legalized, but it's, it's still, it's still an issue, so, um, so we could direct the, um...
Yeah, I just booked to the chief about, about that, actually. And we're gonna look to use our traffic engineer with the county to take a peek at that.
Second thing, Dr. Brady talked about the road resurfacing project over the Lisa Terrace area. Uh, a lot of that funding is from a DOT grant. So we will continue to be aggressive in, in seeking outside funds for our, you know, for infrastructure improvement. Been fairly successful over the years, working with utility companies and also with the state to, uh, to get our 32 miles of street paved. So that work should be starting soon, and, uh, could be some original road work, road work up out there from when that place was first built. So added addition to infrastructure improvements. And finally, uh, I talked a little bit last meeting about, um, the Salem Oak seedling. The state had seedlings from the Salem Oak that they had been, had in a nursery, and they were going to give us one to plant at the Walls House. Well, it turns out that the application to plant it at the Walls House was denied by the state because they insisted on an archaeological study to basically dig a hole to plant a tree. So with a few phone calls and some inter-agency, uh, discussion, the state has agreed to hold this evening at the nursery until we can get approval through the state to plant it at the Walls House. It was suggested that we plant it and then move it. And I, I made an executive decision that that was not gonna work. So, um, we won't lose the seedling, but we're not gonna get it for Arbor Day. Because there's no, there's no way the state's gonna move that one. I made a comment at our last meeting, this is government at its worst, and, um, we'll, we'll get the seedling. It just won't be this year.
How long was the Salem Oak alive, you know?
Five hundred years.
Five hundred years. So well, we can, we can't expect the state to act...
Well, there'll be a lot of future pictures on the wall.
We have the option of planting it on borough property.
Yeah, but I, I just felt moving it, um, the 250 of, uh, revolutions coming up, that tree should be in the ground and growing and thriving by then. So more to follow on the, on the, on the, this evening, uh, saga. But, uh, we're not gonna lose it, but it's not likely we have it for Arbor Day. Question remains, if the Walls House wants to do any future work there, is the same, you know, declaration about archaeology gonna, gonna hold them off? More to follow on that. And that's all I have? You have no discussion items, correct?
Uh, correct, yep.
Okay. We have several ordinances for introduction, and we'll take those one at a time. 2661, 220118, authorizing and encouraging electric vehicle supply service equipment and make ready parking spaces. Motion for introduction only.
So moved.
Second.
Council members Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Brum.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
I do want to let you know, you've seen this ordinance twice before.
All right, so it's up for adoption in our next meeting, do you think?
Uh, no, because it does actually have to appear in front of the planning board, though.
All right, so maybe.
Publicly advertised planning board meeting.
I have a question. Was, was this not already done a couple of weeks ago?
There's no changes to it, Tom, but what happened to it was there was an advertising error.
Oh.
Of the date of the public hearing.
Okay, our next ordinance for introduction, 2671, 220404. Approving an amendment to the ground lease for property in this tax block 73, Lot 1602, located in the Gaston Avenue redevelopment area with FDS Somerville, New Jersey LLC contract developer pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law for the emergency services facility project. Motion for introduction.
So moved.
Second. Council members Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Brum.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
And the last ordinance for introduction only, 2672-22-0404. Approving a second amendment to the bill to suit lease for property in this tax block 73, Lot 1602, located in the Gaston Avenue redevelopment area with FDS Somerville LLC contract developer pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law for the emergency services facility project. Motion for introduction.
So moved.
Second. Council members Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Brum.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
And Kevin, those will be on for April 18th, then? Because they stay with us, right?
Um, they should be, yes.
Okay. All right, we have a series of ordinances for public hearing and adoption. We'll have a public hearing on each of those prior to council's deliberation. First one is 266-22-0307. An ordinance to exceed the CY 2022 municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank by statute. Motion for the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Council members Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Brum.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
All right, Kevin, this is a boil plate procedural that has to be done so that we can adopt our budget at the next meeting.
Uh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Hey, do you have any public comment? Yes.
Uh, Teo Garcia, resident of Mercer Street in Somerville. Uh, Mr. Mayor, could you, just the town council, just briefly explain what this is? What, uh, just like the kindergarten version that seems so important?
Cap, cap bank, and Kevin, correct me when I, when I go off the rails here. We, we are statu- statutorily allowed to go up to a certain amount in, in front of our opponent, so jump in as well. There's an upper limit as to how much we can borrow for. The cap bank lets us establish a fund so that if we don't exceed that in any given calendar year, we can bank it for future use. Now...
Kind of like a credit card. It's got so much in it, uh, if you need more, you can call them up and see if they'll add a few extra bucks. In this case, we're not gonna call any, but we are going to take whatever we don't spend, and we're gonna turn, throw it into the subsequent calendar year so that we have enough money to operate. Essentially, what happens with the borough, these calendar years are finite, but the borough's budget is sort of intimate. It keeps rolling along. So some of the things we need for this year, we're gonna spend for next year. Some of the savings we would have this year, we're going to put into next year. And therefore, we have, we're solvent, because state law does not allow us that a deficit.
So we're okay?
And we're okay. We're cool.
We do this every year.
This is something that's done every year, and, uh, we've never run out of money.
Yeah, the bank, the bank allows you to spend that money with the next 216 budget years.
Right.
The next two.
Next two, yes.
As far as I know, we've never actually had to tap into that. We, we set it aside every year, but as far as I saw it, we haven't been able to put it up in around that.
Many years here, no. We, we, we try to budget very carefully and have a little bit of surplus left, just in case of emergencies. But if you have too much of a surplus at the end of the year, you overtax the public, and that's, that's not good policy either. So we generally have, you know, a, a small surplus every year that gets automatically forwarded into next year's budget.
I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, motion to close on this ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Council members Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Brum.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Okay, motion for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Council members Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Brum.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
All right. Next ordinance for hearing and adoption, 2667-22-0307. Amending Chapter 127, Section 5, entitled Permit Number of Stickers. Sticker bulk items specifically amended Section B, amending the cost of stickers to $5 and specifically allowing bulk items to be part of the sanitation sticker program. Motion for a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Council members Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Brum.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Hearings open on this ordinance.
Just, uh, my name is Larry Cleveland, delivered 34th Avenue. A question about this. Can you specify what new bulk items are gonna be included?
Kevin, yeah? Uh, no new bulk items.
It's just, just changing the price?
It's the price. Currently, the price, the ordinance reads $3, the actual price is $4, um, we're raising it to $5.
But no, no changes in what you mean?
Uh, no, and, and throughout the year, they, you know, there are certain things that are identified that we no longer can put there, but we just make those changes.
Those are environmental issues.
Environmental, yep.
Thank you.
Motion to close, public?
So moved.
Second.
Council members Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Brum.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Motion for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Kevin, I just had a quick question. What, what has happened with the tipping fees then? Have you paid for tons?
So, um, the tipping fees locally have exceeded $100 a ton.
They were 78?
They were 68 when we started three years ago in contract. We did, uh, Jeremy and I worked on a project, uh, last year with, with the father. We are reducing some of our costs. The council allowed us to make an amendment to the contract that allowed the tipping to be at other landfills other than the BRI, which is located here, um, which reduced our costs to about $72 a ton. So again, it's considerably high. Still savings. Yeah, still savings, yeah.
But there's costs involved in trucking the, uh, refugees to be in new...
Yeah, well, again, with the trucking, the trucking and the hauling that we already paid for in our contract, it's we pay for the tipping, it's we pay for the landfill.
Right, the weight of the items.
Yes, whatever landfill cost, that gets put back onto the borough, and we have to pay that. So obviously, the cost of these items have far exceeded, and we're hoping with this, people will repurpose and reuse.
That was my next comment, yeah.
There's an effort to do that, and, and then also, this is effective July 1st. So we would encourage anybody that thinks they're gonna have a bulk-based cleanup that they should come in now and save a dollar, you know, on each sticker.
We've also seen that the, uh, the COVID situation, where a lot of people are home now, uh, we've seen some increase in the, now the garbage and stuff now. People don't take the garbage to work. They throw it out at home, because that is where they work. And, uh, you know, there's nothing you can really do about that, other than encourage more recycling. And I think we've seen a tremendous effort on that, but it's the nature of the game.
All right.
Um, let's have a roll call on... A roll call. Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Brum.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
All right, next ordinance for adoption, 2668-22-0307. Amending ordinance 2515-17021, Chapter 45, alcohol beverages, Article 1 licensing, Regulation Section 7, P subsection A, paragraphs 1 through 6. Um, motion for a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Council members Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Brum.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Public hearing.
Yes, Larry Cleveland, Great Avenue. What's this one about?
All right, Kevin, for you again?
This is the, uh, li- both liquor stores and, and, uh, consumption places, bars, they, uh, they, they pay an annual fee to hold their license. Um, that's, this is increasing their, their annual fee. The, the, you know, many municipalities do it every year. Um, prior to COVID, we stopped, obviously, to give everybody a break. So we're, we are pretty much far behind, um, of where we would normally be. Um, so it's a small increase. Um, we kind of, you know, in your office, we kind of talked about it and said, well, it's a couple of extra drinks. You know, so, so it's really not a big jump from where we're at. That, that's what that is.
What's the average?
Um, each one of them changed differently, so, so, I mean, the annual... Hundreds of dollars at most, man. What's that? Hundreds of miles difference, excuse me. Yeah, yeah, it's only a hundred, a couple hundred dollars difference. So, so like a consumption license now is $2,000 a year. So, so that's, you know, all the places you can consume. Uh, the, the retail distribution is 17.50, $1,000. So i- it's not a big number. Um, you know, we have the legal authority to go much further. If, if the governing body decides to do that, but this is kind of a little, you know, a slowback catch-up.
And these will be in place for July 1st when we renew those licenses?
Correct.
Any more public comment? Motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Council members Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Brum.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
All right, motion for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Council, council member Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Brum.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Okay, final ordinance for, uh, hearing and adoption, 2670-22-0321. Bond ordinance providing an appropriation of $2,417,000 for various improvements and purposes formed by the borough of Somerville and the County of Somerset, New Jersey, authorizing the issuance of $1,444,000 bonds or notes for the borough for financing part of the appropriation. Uh, motion for a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Council members Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Brum.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Hey, public hearing on this ordinance is open?
Teo Garcia, 171 Mercer Street. Have the appropriations already been allotted, or has this money already been determined where it's gonna go? Has it been earmarked?
This, this is a bond ordinance. This will set us, set up the line of credit for borrowing based on the items that the finance committee has recommended be in the bond. Bond, bonding can only be used for long-term projects. There are certain stipulations as to what you can bond for and what you must pay out of operating.
Have we determined what long-term projects this is going towards already?
Yes, that was part of the discussion that, that the finance level to come up with the, the amount of money that we're bonding for.
And, um, and to find out where these long-term projects are, uh, is it on the website or is it in like previous council meeting notes or?
Kevin, they are on the website?
They're, they're part of this ordinance, so they're, they're listed in the ordinance. Yeah, yeah, they're part of the, the ordinance. I can give you a full copy before you leave today, if you have one behind you. Uh, but they basically, um, you know, they're roads, some of them are offset by grants. So some, in, in some of the cases, we, we, we have to, we, we have to have a skin in the game in some of the grants, so that's our skin, uh, matching some of these grants. They include, uh, properties, Eastern State Parkway, which we're getting monies in from New Jersey American Water to match it. Um, Brookside Avenue, Watcher Street, Riviera Drive, all of which are being matched by grants. Um, and Central Avenue as well, which, uh, I think we're funding that directly.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. And then various curb work and, and throughout the municipality. We're doing a, um, the West End Hoes Roof, um, which is a firehouse in the municipality that's gonna be repurposed. Um, uh, ballparks, we're doing, uh, Carol Page Ball Field, um, left pool renovations. Um, the governing body authorized a grant application, which is actually getting submitted tomorrow on left, left. So we'll see, uh, if we can offset that, that'd be great. Um, and then, uh, some redevelopment cost as well as, uh, insulation of sound system and video system for the civic space. We're gonna be moving out of here, moving into a, a, a fitted out space in, um, in, 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 yeah. And then what'll happen there is this isn't authorization. Doesn't mean that we're spending it now. It means we're gonna be authorized, and we'll have to go for a bid process, and the governing body would have to do all their contracts and so forth. Uh, but these are the authorizations that are being provided.
These are general improvement bonds. So for example, if we're going to buy a very large, expensive piece of equipment, there may be a bond for that.
Right.
Let's say, uh, a hook of lathered rock, which is rather expensive. So that bond would be for that purpose. But with these particular projects, there are so many of them, we put them all together and that's why we list all of it and how much it is, but the total is what we're bonding for. So we have to then go to what's called a bond council and attorney who essentially helps us through the writing of it, the sale of it, obtaining the best interest rates, if you will. And the whole process is, is a little more complicated than this because we're just authorizing it.
Right.
As Kevin said, we may not spend some of this money for a year or two. Then there are other times where if somebody comes along and builds it for us, we may cancel a bond. So as I explained before, the process is fluid with this, it's not static. We don't end one year and start over and do it, even though it looks that way. Everything we do is based upon what our present and future needs would be and how much we're going to have aside for it. Sometimes we get lucky, we work some money, and for, for example, South Side Park, that was two and a half million dollars. So it depends, so it's not everything that you see now will actually be spent next year or this year, but it will be spent for those purposes we outlined.
That's right, thank God, I really appreciate it.
And also, we have to come up with five percent down payment.
Yes.
So the, the, the money we bond is actually ninety-five percent of the cost. The other five percent goes into our regular budget.
Could any of that go towards getting a new fire truck? I guess that's already being handled, uh, because it...
Well, that would, if a request was made at the beginning of the discussions, in the first, in October of the, of this year for next year, and I'll get to that point when we have the adoption. Um, the list would start with that and it would be, it would be called down to the final product that council's being asked tomorrow. We can't exceed this amount, but we could, we could always bond less if our needs change.
There, there is a pending authorization that took place for a fire truck.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Last year.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Left House.
Uh, Mike Lopetoski, uh, chief summer bowl rescue squad. Um, based on previous conversations, discussions with, uh, various members of the body, uh, present here this evening, um, it was my understanding that one of the things enumerated in this bond would be um, somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for water rescue training and equipment in the wake of, uh, tropical storm Haida. And I was just giving the body an opportunity to see maybe perhaps that was an oversight or if there was an explanation as to why that wasn't included.
Uh, the part of the planning is true.
Uh, Kevin, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we're still looking into something separate for that, right?
Yeah, it, it wasn't an overfict, Mike, it was, it wasn't intended to be an authorization.
It was a particular one.
Yeah, they, they, there, there's about five or six items that, that we, we have a lot of, uh, discussion now, but particularly the one that, you know, and not, not to go into department request here because it just wouldn't be appropriate to do that, is, is, is to let you know that we, we're, we're contracted with a firm now that are looking at items, um, that, that are related to, um, strong response, uh, which we had, we had said at the time that we met with capital, we would do that. We've also learned that, that both, um, uh, I've recently spoke to, on, on the request was a, a particular type of Zodiac boat, which I'm not familiar with, but I've spoken to, to, uh, two municipalities that have made that purchase, so we're getting a little more familiar with the cost. And we've made a request to the manufacturer of that, that, that boat as well, um, to see what it is. I know, you know, I, I know from Seaside Heights that they wanted theirs last year and it was backward. So we're still looking at these things, we're looking at ways we can fund that. But again, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go into detail.
Sorry, that, that is exactly. Does it answer your question? Any more public comment?
Yes, on this?
No.
On this order?
No. All right, motion for closed public. So moved.
Second. Council members, Graham O'Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Vron.
Yes.
Fred Weave.
Yes.
All right.
Motion for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
I have one question on the finance committee. Do you remember what the approximate initial ask was? We're, we're, we're going out for about two point four billion. Do you roughly remember?
Not off the top of my head.
Probably double.
Oh, I, I didn't, I would say, I think it was the, the request by the department?
Yeah, just to confirm the reference.
Off the top of my head, it was probably, probably close to eight million dollars.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
And it, there's a lot of work that goes into making, you know, hard decisions as to what, A, what is bondable.
Right.
Because it has to have a certain life, it has to meet certain criteria. Second of all, is, is it of inherent value? Third, do we have some offsetting funds as we deal with the, with the recent terrorist project? Um, so, you know, it's, it's, it's not a blind check. Unfortunately, we have limitations, our credit rating remains strong. Um, and we have to come up with five percent down. So if we, you know, on a two-hundred, two million dollar bond, it's still forty thousand dollars.
But the request page is next, I think she must be watching, three point six million.
I was gonna say, I thought the request wasn't eight billion, I mean, I still have my hair...
You, you remember as a, as a child, you'd make your Santa list and, um, hope to get, you know, the, the first item.
Well, I do want to comment on one thing, because Mike, well, that's your point, it was, uh, money in that particular cluster training. Now, the question we always ask is, is it bondable? For example, what we generally bond for is hardware, okay? Now, certain professional services could be bonded for, but probably not today, okay? Only in rare instances. I know that I was involved in a particularly nasty situation about thirty years ago where we had a landfill and we had a lawsuit and what have you, and there was a lot of money that we had to spend on that. So those professional services were, uh, they're called extraordinary unspecified services, or EUS. Those things you probably can't, anything that's blanket-like training probably wouldn't be bondable then. So that's why we'd have to look at the entire project.
And, and there are other funding opportunities, I know with state budget season, so I'll be in touch with, uh, some of our legislators, state legislators on, uh, different items. Uh, you know, there's always county money that comes through, so it, it, look, everyone on, on the board, I'm sure, supports, uh, that project. You know, I certainly do, uh, we definitely need it, just we're looking for opportunities of how to fund it and, you know, what's bondable.
Just a reminder, we're talking about this specific bond in the run of us right now, the items listed. And, um, so I see pages nineteen and twenty have these specific, uh, items that this will, that this will come.
I didn't think it would be, uh, due, I, I don't know if we have the full package. Oh, you do, okay. Sorry, I didn't know it was out there.
All right, any more comment from?
It's six items listed.
Uh, six sections, yeah, in each section, there's items.
All right, we have a motion and a second, roll call.
Council members, Graham O'Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Vron.
Yes.
Fred Weave.
Yes.
All right, I want to thank the finance committee and our administration, but this is never easy. Um, I remember one year we had over six million dollars in requests. We've got it down to about one point two million. Um, and of course, so, plus our high net, we tried to buy anything.
We started getting it up though.
That's right. But thank you for this, and these projects will, you know, will increase the, the livability, safety and, and enhancement of the town and look forward to getting a good, great, you know, when we go out to finance it. All right, we're at the open public meeting section, the motion to open.
So moved.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, I'm sorry, was there a motion to open public?
I, I made the motion.
Was there a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you.
All right, roll call.
Graham O'Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Vron.
Yes.
Fred Weave.
Yes.
All right, public session's open, I have an address for the record division, help us for myself, please.
Before I excuse myself once again, Mike Lopetoski, summer bowl rescue squad chief. Um, in earlier discussion, there was something that was brought up in regard to a campaign about bicycle safety, helmet use and whatnot, if there's a program that's gonna be going on, um, I'm sure I can speak for the fire department, um, I won't make a commitment of half the fire department, but I can assure you that along with the police department, that the rescue squad would be more than happy to help participate in an awareness campaign of that sort. Um, and we'll also be having, uh, an Easter egg hunt on April tenth, so I don't, I know that's short notice, but if, uh, we're going with stock materials, um, that are available in terms of like, you know, state DOT and whatnot, um, if we get ahold of those materials before April tenth, we'd be happy to have those at the Easter egg hunt to hand in as well.
Great.
And you all know where to find me.
Sounds great, Mike, I, I also think that, um, we can contact, I think it's RideWise?
Yeah, RideWise.
Yeah, they always have meetings.
And, um, also, I know K and M, Middlesex County does bike rodeo, bike rodeo, it's like safety workshops, so maybe that's something we can coordinate down the road with the fire department or, or in the, in the squad and, and so on.
Yeah, be happy to do that.
Yeah, I was just, I'll call RideWise tomorrow, I'm sure they have material immediately.
I think with the tour, you know, being, being back in town as well, you know, there'd be a lot of interesting bikes.
Also, maybe, uh, it's something to, to help address the Y two A issue, to, they have an after-school program, maybe, and their staff. Uh, maybe RideWise can do a safety education program with, with their staff and also, uh, some kind of program for the kids.
Yeah. Through our schools, yeah.
A lot of kids go there.
Yeah.
And you mentioned the fact that it's a neighboring community and there's that, uh, that's the, that blurred line between, uh, Fender and Somerville, right? Because downtown Somerville really is part of, part of Fender, and so, um, the fact that that's where it took place and it's that shared community feeling. Um, I think reaching out to both Vander Veer, um, and Adamville, uh, to include them in, in, in any kind of program and maybe communicate with, um, the mayor and council in Bridgewater as well, to let them know that we're, we're trying to do something.
It's, it's, I'm, I'm an avid cyclist and it is dangerous out there, it really is, and, uh, even as an adult, it, it can be scary sometimes.
Yeah, you have to be defensive in your car, you're even more defensive on a bicycle. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Good thought, Mike.
Mr. Biden, Mr. White? Yes, thank you very much. Um, Larry Cleveland, over thirty-four Grand Avenue. Question I have is about the current street curbside replacement on Grant Avenue. We just finished Fair, uh, Fairmont Avenue, if you're gonna be doing your street next. I don't know the reason for ripping up all of the sidewalk areas. They've destroyed the street. I know it's temporary, but I can't believe that Belgian block is cheaper than regular old-fashioned curb concrete.
It is.
It's, this is what I'm just, what I'm trying to find out, because I just can't believe it, that all the manual labor it takes to put these bricks in and cut the street, and I have a question about how that got out of order. But you're saying that Belgian block is cheaper than concrete?
You remember when this one in?
It was a long time ago.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, Dave Holland, Dave Holland was named, they did a little study and they found out that the Belgian block was a more efficient way to do this because if a curb gets chipped and several pieces of that curb get busted up, well, they're not gonna repair it, it's just gonna go... If a Belgian block gets busted up, you can put a new block in. So in a way, it was a more efficient way. As far as cost was concerned, at, at that time, and I was kept going to where there was Dennis and me because Dave said, you know, there's no real significant difference between Belgian block and, and, uh, the concrete, and that's, and the Belgian block looks better, and a lot of people believe that.
Over the, over the long, let's say, twenty-year or thirty-year life of the curbing.
Yeah, right.
It has, you know, it's a six. Now, the initial cost, I couldn't tell you.
Well, I just, I just...
A hundred feet of block versus a hundred feet of curb.
I see the work that's being done, it's like, there was nothing wrong with my curb, it's done everybody else's.
Well, the policy is that if it has to, it's more than half the curbing, it all comes out.
It all comes out.
It doesn't, we don't do it in pieces.
Okay.
And once fifty percent of a street has to be done.
That's what I, that's what I, I just wanted to know, was I just...
That, that was the key, that was the deciding factor, like, when do we do it? And do we do block or curb, whether they have a hodgepodge?
Right.
The decision was made, I bet, which was continued on, that once, once it gets to that point, you go outside completely.
My house was built nineteen sixty-six, and I believe the Belgian block was put in then, because I've never seen any of that neighborhood with concrete curbs. You know, Lee, Laurie, Lisa, they all have, and the, and we are not replacing the curbs, we're only gonna redo the street. The reason why we didn't do the curbs on Fairmont and Grant was because that was part of a project with a water company.
Right.
And they weren't going, they'll do curb to curb, but they wouldn't do the curves. How's it look, by the way?
It started coming along, it's just a pain in the butt. So I, I just didn't know about the financial part of it, I'm thinking like, my gut reaction would be, it can't be cheaper, but over a long run, it's a issue.
I think some questions that I've heard in the neighborhood, like, too, uh, that I can ask here is, is, uh, the street's not gonna be completely repaved, right? So the area that they, because they cut the asphalt.
Yeah.
About what, sixteen inches?
About six, six, six inches out, so they can refill it, so they, they cut it six inches from the existing curb, the old existing curb. They remove all the existing curb and they put Belgian block in, and then they still have a gap of about four or five inches that they had to put asphalt in. So I don't know if they're just gonna fill in the asphalt, but at that one side and then eventually get water in and crack, and then we'll be doing all the street again, I'll say in twenty forty? For all I need?
Maybe, maybe Fred and Roger will see that.
I'm probably trying to make it.
If you're all here in twenty forty, I'll answer that question.
I'll be, I'll be right here in my, remember back in there?
Right.
I appreciate it, thank you. I just think that it seems to be, it's coming along, but they, they've been like, kind of spotty with the work they're doing. It seems like not to make a lot of totally sense. I don't know anything about the structural work, so I can't really speak to it.
Had we had the water companies scheduled in advance, we could have budgeted money last year for the curbing.
Done it the same day.
And done it all at the same time, but utility companies dance to their own tune. And we insisted that they give us an escrow account that they would have spent on paving, so we supplemented that with our money, with all the issues.
So we get some of it coming back from...
Whatever, whatever the amount would have been to, to, to do the roadway. You know?
Yeah.
That, that, we backed and then we did it.
Okay, well, then I did it.
And then we have to replace the trees that have been taken down, too, and several trees.
There's a couple of trees that had to remove, well, a couple of them were really bad.
Yeah.
Or just in our area in particular. And VPW did talk to us and we did look at them, and a couple of them were just dead, dead. And a couple of them were just blown through the, uh, broken curb, the old broken curb. And some of, some of the, uh, roots had been, had been cut off.
I think Fairmont took about two weeks or so to complete the, the entire job, so...
Yeah.
Depending on where, how far along they are in your...
Yeah, we're about a weekend.
I'd say by our next meeting, we should have...
Sure.
You know, you'll be here talking about speeding on your street.
Yes. That's all right, move.
All right, thank you. Mr. Garcia. This may be a record, but one hundred percent of the Republican attendance spoke at tonight's meeting.
That's a good thing, we want that, right?
Name and address, sir.
Mateo Garcia, one seventy-one Mercer Street, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I don't read the news, uh, on the physical newspaper often, but I, this one caught my attention and I loved it. Somerville takes first step in redevelopment project, this is the Courier News reporting on March, May twenty-eighth. Um, and it's always exciting to see the town of Somerville continuing to grow and redevelop and take out the old and bring in the new. Um, and as I'm reading the article, I love how the planning board is very diligent in their, uh, efforts to make sure that there was enough parking, to make sure that there was enough space in the sidewalk, um, in front of the building and to make sure that there were enough units or the size of the units were appropriate enough, I suppose, to meet whatever parameters. Um, but missing in any of this article is, of course, any mention of affordable rent, and that's what I want to address, Mr. Mayor. Um, I don't have any solutions for the rent issue, but I suppose that I raise it again, I raised it the first time I spoke and I raise it again, uh, just in the hopes that perhaps the town council, uh, or this town will take an interest in developing some type of committee uh, or study on rent affordability in the town. Um, I do think that it's, it's a critical topic to discuss, uh, and we have to ask big questions of the town, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, hopefully you can ask the town council some of these questions, you know, what is the character of the town that we want, you know? A certain percentage of our land is only, uh, allowed to be developed, the rest is dedicated to government buildings and public entities like the hospitals and the schools. And in that limited space, we're building a bunch of apartments. that limited space, we're building a bunch of apartments. And so what percentage of our town is going to be made up of renters? What is the average rent going to be in Somerville? Where do most of the workers in town live? How far do they commute? Can someone who works at Shoprite's cashier stand afford an apartment in Somerville with the money that they make earning fifteen dollars an hour? I don't know. And I also ask, Mr. Mayor, that we consider this, because good political fortune doesn't last forever, and I know that a couple of weeks ago, we had the town, the mayor of Manville come in, who identified himself as a very staunch Republican, and I imagine getting a certain fervor or sentiment amongst the town, complaining about so much overdevelopment because of the environmental hazard, paired with the amount of renters who are paying an exorbitant amount of rent, that could be, probably not so good come campaigning season. And the reason I mention that is because the second word in this article is, quote, "the unrelenting apartment construction boom." Unrelenting. And so right away, the media is already picking up some kind of negative connotation about so much construction. And if we're just building and building and building, but not getting concern over the rent prices, I'm very worried. We, I've been to three council meetings now, I think more airtime has been given to the size of a sign in front of the new police fire department station than any mention about rent affordability. But we know that rent is going up. I'm a renter, my rent is going up two hundred dollars next year, and the rent of many people in Brookside Gardens, where I live, is going up by many folds, some three hundred or four hundred. And again, I don't have answers, but I think it'd be very hard, Mr. Mayor, for this body, the members of this body, to tell any constituent in this town, we can't do anything. And if that's the case, then perhaps put it on the record that the town council is not able to do anything rent wise, or beholden to Trenton, but I don't think that's the case. And so I ask that this delivery body, Mr. Mayor, at least take seriously the question of renters in this town. How do we make it a better town? How do we make it an affordable town? How do we make it a town so that not every two or three years, new families are cycling through? And if that's what we want, that's fine, but then we're only going to have a few people who are homeowners and will stay the long term, and everyone else will just cycle in and out, and that speaks to the character and nature of this town. These are big questions that I think are worth asking and are worth exploring. They're just as important as the curb, the street pavement, X, Y, or Z little thing and that thing, which, they're not little, those things also contribute to the quality of life in the town. But rent affordability is a serious issue, and I know that we can be creative at a local level, and strongly ask that we explore some of these options. Again, just to get the discussion started, just to get some parameter, some understanding, so we know what numbers we're working with, and have some of these big philosophical conversations, Mr. Mayor, amongst the town council and amongst the leaders of this town. So I submit my comment.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. I would suggest that you also come to our next planning board meeting and share, you know, your thoughts with them as well.
I think that, I presented this, excuse me, sorry, to the town council, to, I don't know to what extent the planning board regulates rent, so my understanding is they are more about the nuts and bolts, the size and the parking spaces, I don't know. Is the planning board responsible for rent control? So I would go, but I come to this body, and I think I pulled a comment to you, in the hopes of, yeah, that at least some discussion can start, some exploration. I know there was a committee after Hurricane Ida that was developed, right? I don't see why another committee cannot be established to look at the issue of rent affordability in Somerville, and what that looks like. And again, it's just a starting point, but it's a serious issue that merits discussion when a majority of our constituents are going to be renters. The majority of the citizens of this town, I believe, will be renters.
So I, I would be happy to be educated on this area, what are our town policies and restrictions, and what is our ability to control rent? I'm not sure we have this, but I'd be happy to learn about that, and I also work in the nonprofit world, also I'm aware of some potential solutions, they're not immediate solutions, but in terms of bringing fair income housing to a community. So I don't know what the procedures are, but I think it starts with education, and that we need to know what we can and cannot do as a borough council to address this.
I agree with the councilwoman's statement.
As a renter myself, I feel you. All right.
Anywhere public comment?
Well, yeah, just to piggyback on this, Mr. Brum, you had the meeting with the flooding and zoning. I didn't get a notification about the meeting, so I apologize if I missed it. I think that with all the different changes in it, I must have missed when the meetings were, so we can maybe send it out to everybody to remind, because the meetings are like all over the place, and they changed a couple of times in the beginning, but I'll get more regular, because I do want to participate. But the last borough council, they introduced those four ordinances, and they touched on affordability. And part of the combination of discussions that we had when we had everybody in in December was to address just what he's talking about, affordability. So we have touched on it, but we kind of stepped back from it. They called it the workforce, workforce housing. Workforce housing, that's similar to what he's talking about. It mentioned it back in December, not wait, the council mentioned it in those ordinances back in December. They're all quote, and we're doing our new study on it, but that's something that we might be able to look at.
Right, would you take that back to your group?
Absolutely. We, well, we've had, we've had discussions now in both of our meetings about it. The issue that we have with our current situation is that it's a, it's garden apartments zoning, as you know.
Yes.
That has been redefined as the art developments that we have, and in those developments, we're working with three developers, I believe, three landlords, three owners of the various properties. So in order to include, if that were to be the case, there would have to be thoughts about density, and then what that would equate to, and so we pause those discussions until we know where we can go with said project, to find out what that would look like and how much of the property would be able to have low income housing, or whatever the term we came up with was. So we, we haven't been able to put a pin in that, we haven't, we haven't put a pin in that yet, but we also haven't defined it, because we need to know more about what the, what the cost and everything else would be for that kind of a project. But that is, that's macro level, that would not mean for the entire town, because we're working with a small section of the zoning for the town. The larger issue.
False.
Right. The larger issue would be to look at that for, you know, the majority of the town, and any areas that would be in the process of being built. But that would be, again, in our discussions, in our committee, that would have to be something that would be kicked back to this body to take a look at that.
Be on the scope of your plans for.
Correct. But it is something that has been, has been subsequently brought up, has been something that has come to the table, because it was in revised zoning ordinances.
And it's not a situation unique to us, it's statewide.
Hopefully you recall, those ordinances were taken off the table, and they died at the end, and it's all ordinances, you don't get.
Well, no, but that's what led to what Mr. Brum was chairman of.
I have no idea what they are now. Then, may I ask, or may I suggest something, and I know as you were there and so was I, the last planning board, the Elizabeth McMathis represented, she's a planner that represented the applicant, one of the applicants, the lady.
Yes, yeah, she spoke last, yes.
She's really quite talented, I spoke to her afterwards, and she has a personality beyond the stoical personality that she showed at the meeting, and her expertise is affordable housing. And I was thinking it might be a possibility, if you wanted to, Kevin, reach out to her, we could have her at a council meeting maybe in the summertime, when we're not as busy, because quite honestly, we have no expertise in this at all. So I mean, everybody thinks it's a great idea, but when the developer comes in and says he's putting a hundred million dollars into the project, and he wants to get his money back, there are some realistic issues.
Sure.
But I'd like to get, I'd like to at least see if she would be willing to come out and address a public meeting, a council meeting.
Many years ago, we actually had a consultant, it's probably in the files somewhere, Kevin, when Mount Laurel and the fair share of housing was in turmoil, we had someone come in and do an inventory of where we were, because the planning board at that point wanted to make the case that our existing housing stock met the majority of the qualifications for affordable housing, based on income levels within the county, within the state. And it was her finding that we actually exceeded the requirements. Now, with the real estate boom nowadays, I don't know where, you know, where those numbers are.
What year was that in?
Mayor Gallagher was still in office, it's gotta be late, late two thousand nine, two thousand ten, it's probably in the, in the files somewhere.
I would say a lot of that.
Burning the light of my room, too.
I would say a lot of that information.
It's probably outdated, but it would give us a baseline where to start.
We have a large number of Section Eight housing units in this town, we have.
Senior citizens.
Senior citizen housing in this town, and I understand where.
There's a difference between low income rent and affordable.
I understand that also, but we're also looking at the, the amount of housing we have that's available to the public versus what's not available to the public. Schools, churches, county seat, you start ticking off all of the buildings in this town that are not available to the public, there's no housing in the schools or what have you, so therefore you've got to have, you've got to realize that this town is compressed quite a bit as far as housing is concerned.
But isn't the point here is that the percent of higher rents is going up, so it's reducing the percent of?
The percent of rents is going up everywhere.
What we could do, Mayor, is we could, next meeting, we have the budget of public hearing, after that, we can set up the following needs, discussion, and we can put together some data that we can grant, I don't know how much, but certainly to see, you know, to start getting a better picture, and, you know, it's tough just to debate this now, but look at the big picture, formulate a plan.
Okay. Going beyond the scope of open public.
Much needed discussion.
Yep.
All right.
And motion to close, public.
Go move. Second.
Council members, Rambo Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yeah.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Brum?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
All right, consent resolutions, or any council would like pull for individual discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to discuss seven, two-two oh four, okay, one oh seven.
Okay. Anyone else?
All right.
One oh six, authorizing the sale of surplus property being a two thousand Pierce Fire pumpers in municipal bid in accordance with state co-op pricing system. One oh eight, approving Bridgeville ice cream truck removal for vendor's sixth month. Good to see the sound, the sights and sounds of spring and summer back along us, why they play, is it Camp Town Races? It's not a, it's not an ice cream theme, but it's, 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 it's good to, it's good to hear. Welcome them back. One oh nine, contract to Your Way Construction, road improvements, lease of terrace from Reimer Street, Leeway and Lori Drive, amount of five hundred two thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. One ten, approving Maria Rodriguez to serve on the Municipal Alliance Commission and Youth Services Committee, thank her for allowing us to volunteer. One eleven, appointing Dave Edwards to the District Advisory Committee, again thanking him for his volunteerism. One twelve, approving payment to Joe Randis for accumulated time earned in accordance with his contract upon retirement. One thirteen, authorizing issuance of request for bids, connection with the borough's waste management system. Kevin is just a typo on the borough, you must detect that late at night, you reversed the last two. Not a major typo. It's the teacher, I can't help it. One fourteen, and my, my high school compatriot there is remarking on my attention to detail. One fourteen, amending resolution seventeen oh one nine eight, three fifty, authorizing an agreement between the county of Somerset and the borough of Somerville for use of sixteen spaces and parking lots, seven on East High Street for police and county use. One fifteen, adjusting salaries to forty-six thousand dollars for listed employees, retroactive back to January one. One sixteen, approving the submission of a grant application to Somerset County Recreation Grant Program, Michael Left Park pool improvements at twenty-two Park Avenue. One seventeen, authorizing apartment to be placed on Davenport Street, in front of Nine Davenport Street where it was during the pandemic. Have a motion on those.
So moved.
Second.
Council members, Rambo Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yeah.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Brum?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Resolution one oh seven, memorializing the awarding of contract to Demco in the amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred forty dollars, twenty-eight cents for library furniture utilizing the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance.
So move.
Second. You got a question?
Yes, I would be remiss if I did mention that the library board president has told me that the library board contributed about forty-seven hundred dollars towards the payment, and Kevin was aware of that, probably painfully aware of it on several occasions, but that the council, of the library board president wanted to know, and also compliment them to their nice contributions to the footage of the library.
All right.
Go call.
Council members, Rambo Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yeah.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Brum?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
All right, bills and vouchers.
Your Honor, I move in a total of two million, six hundred ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents in bills and vouchers paid.
Second.
I assume that's the quarterly payment to the county for library and open space.
Oh, yes.
And then, as the public knows, every, every quarter, we are billed by the county for its services, and then, is the school count, are they on quarterly as well, or do we pay them monthly?
No, they're quarterly.
They're quarterly as well, so this is the, probably the biggest of the, you know, of the cycle, because we can't do two million any treaty.